Bartender before or anything?
I've been a bartender waitress, I'm a chef.
You familiar with all the rules and regulations that we have?
Yes.
Sure, all the regular reasons.
Why is this on me?
You're doing a good job.
You started it.
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Uh, on the way.
So you're buying or renting?
For lease.
For lease. And this is your first location, you haven't been in business before, but you've worked in the industry?
Yes.
I guess, I can't quite tell, you're saying pub and grill, right?
Yeah.
And you said you were a chef somewhere, where were you?
Yeah, I've been a chef for about eighteen years, working corporate services right now for Staxwa GE Healthcare.
Oh, okay, okay, so, and you're familiar with all the rules, you can only buy liquor from a licensed wholesaler, somebody comes with a great deal for cash, for pennies on the dollar, can you take that?
No.
Yeah. Hours of closing are not just a suggestion, you know, that's the state law. The, I don't think we've had much problem there lately, I mean, there have been some issues there in the past.
In the past.
Yeah, I've heard that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. The, there will be times when the police will send somebody in there underage, you know, staying up or compliance check.
Yes.
Compliance check. And, uh, and like, you know everybody, you either has to be a licensed bartender on the premises, you know, obviously.
Yep.
And should there be an occasion when you do need to call the police or you're serving your help, using the police? We want them to be a partner in solving the problem, you know, not like, oh yeah, I don't know what happened. One of my p's is when somebody shows up in the ER at midnight and I was at, fill in the blank bar, and the bartender didn't call the police, didn't see anything, doesn't know anything, you know, so. You have a timeframe in mind, something like, when do you, when do you think you might open?
Uh, well, we're hoping to open sometime next week.
Okay, so you're not gonna do like extensive remodeling or anything?
No, no, not at all.
I guess I'm not familiar with, is there, there's a kitchen there?
Uh, well, right now they have a brand new food system that they put in, my only remodeling that I'm gonna be doing is bringing in kitchen equipment, which is, you know, set to happen, I guess as quick as I can make it happen.
Yeah, what kind of menu are you thinking?
Uh, just burgers, pizzas, wings.
Bar food?
Yeah.
That's all I have, I'll move approval, subject to necessary requirements.
Yeah, we're motioning in a second, is any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Now this goes to the one tonight's council meeting, and the other five all are moving apart, all the persons aboard on it, so. And, uh, license, should we pick up the license?
We still have outstanding inspection sheets.
Yeah.
Subject to necessary requirements.
Okay, so it's approval subject to necessary requirements.
Yeah.
Okay.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Janelle Meyer Brown.
Hello.
Hello. The wedding center, former wedding center.
Yes, former.
It's gonna be weddings again though.
Yes, but different, different, yes.
Have to be glad to.
Yes.
Yeah, obviously, most people here have already heard what you're, your plan.
Great.
Anything to add, Patrick?
I think this is a great business for our downtown. The business plan and concepts that we've, you know, shared for the business, it's eventiment.
Eventiment's the word of the planning, yep. It's French for event.
I think she has a concept centered around like the breakfast at Tiffany's Department Store type of wedding type of atmosphere. It'll be a wedding center, hosting up to two hundred and fifty people, I'm kinda taking your story, but.
Beautiful chandeliers from middle of the, yeah.
It'd be a nice repositioning of the property, and we look forward to working with her team and developing a good concept for that property in our downtown.
Um, definitely plenty of parking down there, you know?
There is a parking surplus in our downtown, so.
Which is great, that's one reason I like the building.
So.
Mr. Chair, are you, are you buying the building or?
Yes, I'm hoping to buy the building based off pending liquor license and use, so they're under contract right now.
Mr. Chair?
On the way.
I'm the ultimate of the district, I spoke to several of the bid board members, only one had questions about it, and I don't think he was looking at the big picture, he was like, well, there's gonna be people there, and it might be parking, and there might be noise, it's like, well, that's, that's, that's a downtown.
Right.
There should be people there.
Right.
And I, and I, and you're, and so it's, although you're getting a Class B, competition liquor license, you're not gonna be running a bar, it's gonna be strictly a banquet facility.
Correct.
So there'd be no video poker games, no pool table, none of that, so it'll be strictly a banquet hall. And I saw your plan, so no kitchen, it's gonna completely cater, you're gonna have deals with caterers, I imagine, or connections or recommended.
Tall Guy and Grill is excited for us to be here.
Yeah.
We're right across the street from each other now in Tulsa, so it's kinda funny, we're all moving to West Dallas.
Good move, I think it's a great idea, I really do. Considering the alternative possibilities to that building, you know, I'd like to see us do everything we can to help you be successful.
Thank you.
Building needs a lot of work, but I think it's definitely open enough, and it's good for something like this.
Lots of space.
Yes, out of opportunity.
Move approval.
Subject to necessary requirements.
Subject to necessary requirements, yes.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Susan Jessian. Okay, this is kind of a update on how you're doing?
Yes.
You didn't sell it yet?
We did not.
You haven't leased it yet?
Yeah.
Okay, are you closed?
It's still closed.
No, no, are you closed? I know it's closed, cause I'm gonna get any calls, so I know it's closed.
I'm the broker that has it for sale and lease, so I thought I'd come in case you had any questions.
Nobody's not, nobody's interested in?
Uh, well, people are interested but don't qualify, you know, so we're getting a lot of showings.
To lease it or to buy?
Both. So once we dig into their qualifications, money situation, business plan, things like that, so far we haven't had any luck, so that's been the problem so far.
And have you had it for a while?
Probably about four months.
Okay, now we, we haven't approved this license yet, so it's just kinda holding.
Mr. Chair?
On the way.
Um, I guess I'm glad you're being choosy, because.
I used to be in the restaurant business, I owned restaurants before to myself.
Everybody's got big dreams and visions and all that.
I'm very aware of the situation here, and I know Mrs. Jessian for a long time, and I'm trying to get somebody in there that the city's not gonna have a problem with.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I'll tell you that, not just, oh, here's a guy with ten thousand dollars, and, you know, away we go.
Exactly, I wanna, you know, I've had some of the major hitters from downtown, like Kelly's Fleeces and that, in there, and they're still mulling it around, but.
A little small for now.
Yeah, but their relatives want to.
Oh, okay, it's a good starter.
Yeah, a good starter, yeah, so I'm trying to get somebody with a reputation in there.
A good reputation.
A good reputation, exactly.
We get people in, reputation.
Yeah, yeah.
Legally we can hold on to this for, seeing that Scott's not here, for, as far as I know, it kind of belongs as we want, but our policy is we're trying to get away from doing that, so, I tell you, we're just gonna leave it on hold for now. Unless anybody else has anything?
Um, I would, I'd like to add, I'm glad to see that you're making a good faith effort trying to find, we went through this with another bar where the owner, well, I have to clean the place out, it's been empty for two years, he never goes to the broker or anything like that.
Right.
You're making an effort to sell it ideally, I guess, right?
Sure.
Yes.
I guess you've settled for a lease with the tenant, I guess, is that what we're hearing?
Well, her, her ultimate is to sell it.
Yeah.
But, yeah, because of the situation financially, she really needs to lease it, you know, if she can.
Yeah, so, I, I guess I'm satisfied that it's, that it's going in the right direction, or at least not backwards.
Scott.
Hi, I'm leaving open the notebook, yeah.
Item number ninety-four.
Susan Jessian, uh, we haven't.
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six. We haven't voted in favor of the license yet, it's just kinda on hold, we've held it again, but she's trying to lease it out or sell it, preferably sell it. They've been aggressive trying to do it, I mean, pick you on who you do with, we can hold this basically as long as we want, am I correct?
There's a couple of ways you can do it, I mean, you could hold it, which is, you know, given, I assume you're talking about the history of the place and the problems that we've had with it, and the reluctance to grant a license and you have to take it away, it's simply, you know, we've got licenses available, correct? Yeah, there's, so there's no need to hold it, just wait until there's an applicant, an actual applicant who's gonna use it, cause you don't intend to open a bar, correct?
Pardon?
You don't intend to open up a bar there.
Only if I have to, to hold the license.
Yeah, so, that's, that's a sham essentially, wait till there's an actual applicant, make the lease that you have with them subject to the committee approving a license for that person.
That would work.
Will it still be available though?
Yeah, we have licenses available.
But if somebody's gonna, on the way.
Yeah, but if, but if those licenses get used by other applicants at other locations, suddenly there's no license for this location, correct?
Yeah, I don't know, how many do we have available?
At least one, maybe two.
So, potentially, you know, and so like I said, you could grant it, or you could take the position that that's the price you pay for having a place that's, I think, what, two licenses in a row, we went through verification? Two license holders there?
Sixty-five hundred and, yeah.
So, so what would the committee wanna do, so then, instead of we, we just, instead of holding this, we just place it on file? Of course then.
Well, you could hold it, that's fine, wait until there's an actual applicant who's gonna open a bar there.
It's probably better, cause she's paid the money already too, so.
I'm still concerned the license won't be available, and would it be easier now if I just opened the bar? I have a couple of gals who might be interested in managing it, that at least the license would be there.
Mr. Chair?
On the way.
I think we're saying we'll hold it for another month at this point, but there's probably gonna come a point where we're not gonna wanna hold it any longer.
We could probably hold it month to month, but not indefinitely.
Okay. So it's still safe for a month, is this what you're saying?
Well, unless people come along and that want all the license that are there. I mean, we got, we got two licenses, and also three people come along for a license, and we grant them, you know, and so that's the only problem.
Um, I came into this after the previous two owners were there, so I know the situation that was, that happened.
The previous two liquor business owners.
Right, exactly, so I'm doing my best to make sure that that doesn't happen again, but the people who call on the property as it for sale or lease, the first thing they ask for is if there's a liquor license, you know?
Cause without a license, it's not working.
Yeah, yeah, so it's gonna be a detriment to the business itself if we don't have the license.
Well, wanna give it another month? See, let's see what happens, all I can say, I mean, if you wanna open yourself, and we, truthfully, your heart's not in it, you're gonna have people there that are running it, that, I don't know how well you know them, and we don't know what they're gonna be doing with it, you know, and it just, it's just, it's, you're doing it obviously just to save the license, but.
Oh, I wouldn't put just anybody in there, I'm not going through that.
Well, because the license will be in your name, and if we revoke it, then it's gone.
Exactly.
Yeah, cause the license won't be in some LLC from some, somebody else.
Exactly.
Yeah. Mr. Chair? I guess, you list a lot of taverns, you, you know the business very well?
Uh, in twenty-seven years, I sold a lot of properties, I'm licensed here in Florida, I sell a lot of.
Is it seasonal, I mean, is this business seasonal as far as, well, you know, it's gonna pick up in the fall?
Kinda, yeah.
I just wanna see, I wanna see light at the end of the tunnel.
It does, it does slow down in the summer months, you know, as far as activity, you know, you do get more business during the winter months, actually.
And is the, is the pace of development across the street holding, and you know, you know Cousins is being built next door, you know the whole, you understand all that, so that's.
Yeah, um, like I said, so far it's been the call, you know, the, the big hitters that I know could buy, get in there and do a good job, they, they just thought it was either too small, or, or, you know, there, there's a strip club across the street which is a little bit of an issue also for some of the people.
My daddy's didn't mind being next door.
No, but I'm just, I'm just saying what they're saying to me, you know, so, you know, um, yeah, you know, it's, 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 uh, we get, we get about three showings a week, you know?
Okay, so, uh, we'll, we'll hang on to it for another month, see what happens, call in, and meanwhile, you, if you wanna take it over, you can, but we're gonna be watching it, hopefully you're watching it closer than we.
Oh, you better believe it, I'm not going through that again.
Okay, so we'll hold it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David Ross. Peddler permanent.
Good evening.
What exactly are you?
It's Dave. It's Dave, it's a hot dog cart, yes sir.
Oh, okay.
I had the cart inspected.
Says under the gun here, huh?
And it's, yeah, they're going in order tonight.
Mr. Chair?
On the road.
Is this food truck gonna be where?
It's gonna be.
I, I couldn't pick up what you're doing.
It's a, it's a food cart, it's a spot right outside of seven twenty-nine South Eighty-fourth Street, right across the street.
Did I see that here and I missed it, and I apologize if I did.
It's stereo, stereo one, right in the front.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Ross, the reason I think you're in here is because you left, question seven on the application for this license. You asked, asked about your, if you ever, ever been arrested or convicted of any crime or an violation, you put, you put down, and you're supposed to say yes or no, and then it says for each, please list the nature of the offense, the date, and the place of conviction, and you put down nineteen ninety-four Cincinnati, Ohio.
That was, that was a felony, yes sir.
Okay, so that's not offense or the nature of the offense, you know, and then, and what was that about?
It was something I did when I was young, I was eighteen, I got busted trying to do the wrong thing, no excuse.
Well, I understand that, but what was it, was it drugs or was it?
Yes, sir.
And, and then, I guess I see your, I see another charge, lewd and lascivious.
They got dismissed.
Uh, criminal damage to property, disorderly conduct, possession of THC, these were all twenty-ten.
They all got dismissed, it was two disorderly conducts and DVD, I had DVDs.
But again, the question was, have you ever been arrested or convicted, so you were arrested for those things?
Yes, I, I wanted to explain it better than put it on a paper, you know, but it was something I did, I was managing Wild Honda, and I sold DVDs, I lost a job making a hundred and some thousand a year because I had four hip replacements, and I did something stupid, I started selling DVDs.
Bootleg DVDs?
Yeah, bootleg DVDs, and I caught charges for it, and I pled guilty to them, and I've not been in trouble since then.
Possession of firearm by a felon, two thousand six?
They got this, it's, what do they call it, he dismissed it, cause somebody was shooting at me, they gave me sixty days' humor, so it had to be.
Again, these are all things that you didn't put on your application, and, and it kinda looks like, well, you know, if I don't put it on, they're gonna find out about it.
No.
We'd rather that you'd be forthright and put it on there, and, cause I guess if you would've put that stuff on there, you might not even be here. It's the fact that you, that you had an incomplete application on some important things, and that's why you're here, cause we don't see most of the food, when was the last time we saw a food peddler permanent here, we never see them, most people fill out the application complete and true, and the way they tell you.
I wanted to tell you everything, is looking at it on record, it was DVDs, and I wanted to explain it to you instead of.
I'm gonna move for denial based on incomplete application.
Is there a second?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll move approval, given that there is a criminal history, but it's not directly related to the endeavor that we're offering a license for, and certainly based on what we're hearing from Mr. Ross, this was in the past, and it's the relatively remote past, so I'll move approval.
Do you have a second?
I'll second for the sake of discussion.
Okay. Further discussion?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions for you, so usually when we get a report back from the police, it lists the date that things happened, kinda gives us some reference, you know, you had mentioned you were eighteen when that happened, that was, you know, what, twenty-nine years ago?
Yes, sir.
Uh, there was a couple of other things on here, are all these things, the possession, the disorderly conduct, lewd, lascivious behavior, was that all?
It was all in the DVD, yes sir.
And what, when was the DVD?
Two thousand ten.
Two thousand ten, so it was about seven years ago, okay, uh, and I got a couple of questions for you on the hours of operation, it, it doesn't say in here what hours you're gonna be operating this.
The stay, stay for close at ten o'clock, I plan to be gone before that, or pretty much before that.
Okay, at what time would you start?
Well, yeah, I won't be out there that long, no sir, I, I plan to be out by nine thirty, ten, tops.
At what time would you start?
Eight thirty in the morning.
Eight thirty in the morning. I'm just trying to remember if there are any houses immediately next to that, I don't think there are, so you'll be off the sidewalk on private property?
Yes, sir.
You know, you're not allowed to, of course, do the sale on the public property, of course, okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anywhere opposed?
No.
Motion carries, yeah, gonna go to a full council tonight, wanna stay around, you can, otherwise you can just check.
You'll likely be approved.
Thank you, thank you, I just wanted to explain it to you, I didn't wanna to sit there and write everything on this paper.
But you wouldn't have had to explain it to us probably, if you would've just been honest on the application and complete.
I apologize, this, this is my first time, I usually use the cart to feed homeless people, and that's my goal, I, I take it, and this is just the first time to try and recoup something back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nathaniel Pfeifer?
Piper, Piper? Is that the second time we ask?
Move for denial based on two non-appearance. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Tina Hamlin? Tina Hamlin? You guys are the first one, so hold on. Sonya? Sonya Ray Batista? How to think on that one? All the ones that get the people in here. Okay, uh, is the renewal for bartender license?
Yes.
Uh, where are you working?
At TNT Sports Bar.
Okay, I'm fifteen dollars there. Uh, do you know why you're being called in front of us?
Yes.
Why is that?
I, for, um, I, I don't, I think there was a part on my application, they said that I, I checked no for something, but I got caught, um, I think she said two thousand fifteen with the underage, and I totally forgot about that I, yes, and I forgot that I had that in two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Chair? Was that at the bar? ATNT Bar, the underage sale?
No, I was working at, um, the fifty-seven bar at the time, it's closed out now.
Mr. Chair? That, uh, the police report says July seventeenth fifteen, maybe that's what happened, maybe it was filed, was that a compliance check? Or was that a party and the police came in, what was, how, how was it that you came to be charged?
It was like a sting that was going on, yeah, and.
And you've been working somewhere since consistently?
Yes, mm-hmm.
In West Dallas?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, you've been working, and this is renewal?
Yes.
And, Mr. Chair, was it a smoking ban violation, or, or what was, it says here's.
Liquor sales, underage liquor sales.
Oh, that's where you have that, huh?
Very softly writes on different spots.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, does anybody have anything else? Do I have a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Just gonna watch it there.
I will, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, Katie Hutton no longer wants a license?
Correct.
Okay, just place it on a file or?
It's her second non-appearance, and it is a renewal application.
Motion to deny?
Denied based on two non-appearance.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Ashley Seifer? Second request. This is a new license, oh, you have TNT also?
Yes. And I was previously licensed through TNT a year ago, but I let it expire, and then, um, the reason for my appearance today is because I also answered on my question about a traffic offense that, I thought it said felony instead of traffic offense, so I had answered no versus stating the traffic offense that I had in West Dallas.
Okay, uh. There's just four, there's four different things.
Yeah, how many traffic offenses have you had?
Well, it's all, I believe it's all, I think there's three, there's maybe one in, one or two in Milwaukee, and then two in West Dallas, I believe, and they're for reg, non-registration of a vehicle, I believe.
No insurance.
And no insurance, yes.
And operating while ride, all suspended, well, that is registration.
Yeah, registration.
But your, your driver's license is suspended currently.
Got suspended because of the non-registration of the plates, and that's what I'm working toward, towards now to get it reinstated.
How did you get here today?
How did I get here today, I lifted.
You use lift as a verb, so you use the.
I used lift today to get here.
That's what a Y, that's what a Y is.
Very good, thank you.
Uh, does anybody have anything else? Do I have a motion?
Move for approval, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Shannon Yarwood?
She called first non-appearance.
Ms. Reels? Reels?
Yesenia Rio?
Yesenia, Yesenia Rio. Is that here? Justin Breed? Michelle Bond? Michelle L. Bond?
Bone, B-O-H-N.
Just cruising along. Edward Dunn? Okay, so new license?
Yep.
For TNT also?
For where?
The TNT, is that the new license? Okay, here, just. Okay, you, you put down, you put down a DUI, an unregistered vehicle.
Right, there wasn't really a lot of space for a lot of detail there.
Okay.
You can add a page.
Yes.
If yes, complete section, use other site if necessary.
This, this, we're all came back, so, um, a lot of them are in the past.
No, everything, except for.
Everything's in the past.
Well.
In the distant past.
The, the one, the most recent thing of driving the vehicle that was not registered, I bought the car from a used car lot, and the person I bought it from didn't do the computer work, the cops pulled me over cause of my template, and sent me that in the mail, and sent me a ticket in the mail. The other stuff is like thirteen, fourteen, twenty years ago.
Mr. Chair?
Hold on, wait a minute.
So, if there had been room on the question?
Mm-hmm.
And you put down DUI, Shenicoe, Wisconsin, two thousand two.
Mm-hmm.
What else would you have written?
Well, I would've written my other DUI that I got.
Your other one DUI?
Well, one was here in the state of Wisconsin, and I got one when I was in college back in ninety-seven or ninety-eight.
So you have, you have three DUIs?
Total, yeah.
Okay. You also have, uh, drug paraphernalia from a long time ago, or in the past.
Over twenty years ago.
Yeah. Yeah. I guess my concern is the three W, the three-
Yeah.
DUIs. Because as a bartender, we're gonna be expecting you to make a decision for your customer that says-
Absolutely.
You've had enough to drink. This is where I'm drawing the line. And on at least three occasions, one was ten years ago.
The one that was ten years ago, I wasn't actually driving, you'll notice, I didn't receive any other citation, because I was actually at a wedding in the backseat of the car having sex with my girlfriend, and when he came over, he said, "You're in position to manipulate the keys." I said, "Dude, I'm not even wearing my pants." So.
That's a great story, but, uh.
Well, it's a true thing.
Oh, yeah. I guess no one's making that one up, but, but, uh.
Yeah.
Um, I'm gonna move for denial based on three DUIs.
Second.
Three DUIs.
Okay, a motion, then we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry. Melissa Hutchins? Melissa Hutchins? Tara Morehouse? First person here?
She sounds happy.
Good evening.
Evening. Send a license, uh. Jenny Hammers?
I believe I didn't fill out all the information that I was supposed to. I was listening to you, seeing to everybody else.
Uh, correct. We have speeding, operating well, so we're just putting on, we got OWI fifteen and moving violation and parking tickets.
Mr. Chair?
Hold on.
So there's two OWIs?
Yes, one was, uh, ten years ago, or actually, I believe eleven years ago now.
Is there one two thousand and four and two thousand and five? That's-
No, I was only one in two thousand and four, and then one that was two years ago. I only have two.
I didn't see that one.
It says another two thousand four.
I believe you.
Yeah, it says two thousand four with a two thousand five connection.
Yeah. And what, what, I, I can ex, I know I got a drunken driving. It was snowing outside, it was a snowstorm. I lived in Muskego. I don't know if any of you know or seen Avenue. Well, I felt my tires sliding, so I got out of my car and was flagging down somebody to come and help me, because I felt my car sliding. I had two glasses of wine. No excuse, I'm thin, I think I blew a point zero eight seven, it was, and I didn't eat anything all day. And the officer said the reason, he could smell the alcohol on my breath. And I was trying to flag somebody down to help me get my car from sliding into a ditch, because it was snowy now.
So who did you not flagging down? A cop?
Yes, the first car that came was police officer. I had high heels on, so in the snow, I could not do the sobriety walk, because I, I was at a Christmas party. And I really only did have two glasses of wine. That doesn't make an exception for my last one.
You applied also in twenty sixteen?
Yes, I was working-
Twelve, twelve sixteen, I'm sorry.
Yes, I, uh, was working at Lucky Chance. And my paper work was, they lost my paperwork, I got a call from you guys, but I quit working that job, so there was not a business there.
It says denied based on the police report.
Okay, but I quit working before I got that information.
So you should've known to write everything down, seeing that you did one before, so.
I apologize, I did move, and I didn't get all my mail on that. That's no excuse.
Does anybody have anything? Do I have a motion?
Do you have an interlock now? I'm sorry to say.
All right, go ahead.
Do you have an interlock now?
I'm done with the interlock, I paid for it for a year.
Yeah, and, and, Mr. Chair, yeah, and you, you have two DUIs, um, the general rule, it's not a written rule, but a third DUI is a big problem for this, this committee and our council.
I'm a non-drinker. I know you guys, that doesn't matter, but I, I haven't drank for almost a year and a half.
Yeah, I'll move approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you so much, all of you.
Okay, then we have the, let's see, police report for the compliance checks. John Starr? And let's bring up Diane Plomary. They both come up here. You failed. We did. Ten, so, did you serve the person?
I did not, I was not there.
Okay, one of your bartenders did, and they didn't card the person, or?
She carded the two officers that came in, and then the girl came in, and she sat right next to someone that we knew, that's a regular. She thought she was with him, so she served her, didn't card.
Okay, how about you? Did you serve the person?
I did not, I was home from surgery.
Okay, so, and?
The bartender is here that did serve the young lady.
And, uh, well, did you discipline them at all, or don't you have a policy and normally carding?
Yeah.
Anyone you don't know, card, card, card. Absolutely.
Mr. Chair? And I, it's your ex-employee, did you, did I hear you say?
No, I did not say that.
Oh.
She's actually my best employee, I can't believe she did this. But like I said, the way they, the girl moved in right next to someone else at the bar, kinda looked like they were together, and she just assumed they were together, so she assumed they were of age. I was actually, they did this, and then they were, did this over at Styles Palace, and I was at Styles Palace when, uh, they did the sting, and I quick called her, and I said, "Watch out, they're out," and she's like, "I think they're just here."
Compliance checks.
Yeah.
And then you got the ticket mailed to you, is, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so you're the bartender that?
I was the bartender.
You was the bartender.
My daughter-in-law.
And so, uh.
She was bad judgment.
Who's paying the ticket? Bartender pays the ticket?
Bartender pays the ticket.
They're both, you're still working, obviously. Bartender's still working for you. You give him like six days off, or anything, a good talking to?
Well, a good talking to, of course, but like I said, for me, in my instance, she's my best one, I can't believe she did this. Poor job.
What happens when your worst ones are working?
They get fired.
Okay, uh, well, watch out, because this, obviously this happens again, then we're gonna have in front of you, you're gonna start requesting, uh, your license on this.
Now, I do have a question for you, um, with the tickets. The bartender gets one, and, uh, owner gets one. And here, for one-two-five-point-oh-seven, number six, paragraph C, it says, "If a violation occurs on a license premises, and the violation is detected by means of an undercover underage person employed by or assisting a law enforcement agency, only the individual responsible for providing the alcohol beverages to the underage person may be issued a citation for or charged with the violation."
Scott, uh.
Yeah, it's a matter for the court, but the bartender gets the citation.
So even though there's two?
I got two, he got two.
Yeah, I got one, the bartender got one.
Is the second ticket allow underage on premises?
Oh, I don't know.
With the actual tickets?
But when you go to court, we almost always dismiss the one on the plate by the bartender.
Yeah, yeah, I would care for that.
This one's the bartender.
Hold on, wait.
This comes up often, that, yeah, why are we writing two tickets?
The bartender got, uh, sell and dispense alcohol to underage, permit underage to enter or remain on license, that's mine.
That's what you got. Well, seeing that's-
Two different violations.
It's two different violations.
So that's how they're getting around it.
I, 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 that, again, I think the city attorney is right, that the question could take the judge and say.
When you go to court, and the bartender plates yours is typically dismissed.
Okay, okay.
Very weird. Sorry, waster guys today?
No.
You're not done yet.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I, just, just so you know, I gotta complain about the bumper stickers on the pole in front of your place.
Yeah, you know, that's another thing, too. I understand.
I, I don't know if you did it or not, but it's just-
But there's a lot more things in that little neighborhood to worry about there than that stickers on the pole.
I know, it's, it's appearance, though, and everything, so. I live in that neighborhood, so I know. Okay, do I have a motion placed, both of them filed?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Mr. Carries? Thank you very much. This is the, the weakened personal property taxes? Are we on those?
Two missing would be cat network and fritellis haven't paid yet.
Bull and chicken paid it.
Mm-hmm.
And is it the amounts correct, then?
As of July thirty-first, they're a little bit higher now.
This is just a discussion. So, uh.
Mr. Chair?
So did they get their license, or, I mean, fritellis happens quite often.
The, this, fritell, fritellis would be the food permit from the health department, and cat network would be like a pet shop permit from the health department.
Hold on, wait.
Fritellis Facebook page says they're closed temporarily, but they're gonna reopen, they're gonna have four locations. I guess, I don't know what that, it was kind of an odd posting. I, I thought it was odd.
Well, so normally we just keep going after them, or do we take the license away they can't open, or what is poss-
Well, Normal disappeared years ago.
Went out the door.
Went out the door with a particular donut shop, so I, I can't tell you what Normal is. You could do nothing, like you did with that one, for about three years. You could take their license away, you could have us prosecute it.
Bakery. Okay, I, I would say, let's, let's go. In order to get their attention, let's, uh, go to take the license away. The cat network, I know there's a volunteer type place, but there's gotta be somebody that's in charge.
Um, I'm, when I did a visit to the cat network, apparently they're not a five oh one C three. Because I asked the woman, I don't know if it's the same person who's running it now. Yeah, I don't know if it's the same person or not, that I, when I spoke to the, you know, and she's like, "Well, no, I haven't done that paperwork." And the volunteers were surprised to hear that.
Which is why they owe personal property tax.
It's altogether possible.
Okay.
And it's only sixty-two dollars and fifty-five cents that they owe though?
I agree with you.
I say, let's just, let's just go after them and get their attention, you know, and let's get this thing in care of.
Someone's in complaint?
That's what, that's what we do. City Attorney also Lovitz, but for both of them, okay, um. Ron? Sit in your chair. It's your name on it already. What?
Do you have Ed come up right away, too?
Ed, you wanna come up here, please?
Um, yeah, I mean, latest from us, uh, we did get lighting plans, there's some missing information on those, went back to designer. Everything came in today, so as of this afternoon, he's got approved lighting plans and everything now.
So what does that mean?
So what's left to do, yeah.
Well, so, so that was sort of the first step in kinda keeping them moving here, so, um, from here, I'm not sure if there was changes or anything. I don't know if you looked at those plans or not, any stuff that your electrician has to fix or anything up there, but, um, but yeah, but then after that, then we can come in there, inspect the ceiling, all the stuff above the ceiling, you can put in the ceiling, put in the floor. Uh, we still had some inspections in the kitchen, uh, that's still to get done, and then, uh, and final inspections for everybody, and and I think he'll just get called, uh, what'd you say, yesterday, or?
Dan was, Dan was there today.
I filled out my paperwork, paid for the food permits.
Okay, but, uh, when?
Uh, I think it was a week ago.
But, okay, last time you were here, August first was the drop dead date, but that was it. And that's why the someone's complaint, which you got a copy of?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I disagree with it, but, yeah.
So, the next thing is if you disagree with it, we're gonna go to a hearing? Is that correct?
How the committee wants to proceed, right? If, if you, are you denying the allegations of the complaint?
Yeah.
Then you could schedule a hearing, if that's what the committee's pleasure is.
Okay. So what, we, we wanna get this quick.
Next Tuesday.
Is there a certain notification period? Yes, Steve.
Mr. Chair?
Hold on, wait.
Ron, you're gonna be open for that August twentieth pub crawl?
I want to be, yes.
So, so you, well, you wanted to be open for today, too. I just saw on that pub crawl listing that you, you were listed as one of the bars on it.
Yeah, we, we wanted to, I mean, I got everything now where we can at least get moving.
So you're saying?
And, uh, on the kitchen, how close, so you have a food permit application in, is it just a basic food permit salad, or is it a full restaurant?
We would, we paid for the full, but we would only use just for the bar.
So, uh, because the kitchen's not put together yet at all? And?
What's your date?
And is it, Ed, you been in the kitchen?
Uh, just briefly the other day, yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, I assume there's a hood and a fire suppression system, and?
And we haven't inspected that stuff at all.
But it's all in, sinks are all in, everything's in, the floors and?
How much does health department, how much else does health department need to see? I mean, have, have you been in to see the sinks, the three, is it two sinks?
Dan, Dan's been.
Dan inspected today and-
Today.
Today, but there's things that needs to be done to clean up and get equipment set for the bar, um, the floor needs to be, doesn't have to be put in, but it was recommended to be put in, because it looks like the place is still under construction. The kitchen didn't have the equipment in place or hooked up.
What's our next normal date, twenty-second?
I do have the floor scheduled for the twentieth, so the whole entire bar, the rest of it, to be done.
If we, Mr. Chair, if I could continue?
What?
The city attorney, what would be the soonest of someone's complaint hearing would be scheduled for you?
You have to coordinate with two of my assistants, one to represent the board and one to prosecute, so a couple of weeks out at least would be good.
And you say you're gonna be gone next month?
Yeah, so I was thinking the, the week of the twenty-first or after would be best.
So we can schedule a hearing, and any day, if he opens in the next.
Well, yeah.
So, the twenty-first is what, a, uh?
I've heard that close for two and a half years.
It's Tuesday.
You know what, Ron, we don't believe you. You always tell us to come by and look at it, and I do, and there's nobody there. That's our next thing that'll be scheduled.
Well, he's gonna be open for the pub crawl anyways, so.
Sure.
On the twentieth.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, you've never approved the license, so you wouldn't be able to open.
Oh.
Okay, so, you know, I just, I don't understand this whole thing, I don't know. Putting us a lot of time, the, the hearing costs a lot of money, you know, effort that goes in on it, so. So is twenty-second good to everybody? Uh, so you can get back to us, Scott, if that's okay?
And twenty-second is the soonest?
Soonest that works for everyone, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Hold on, wait.
So we never approved it subject to necessary.
Not the seventeen, eighteen.
Not the seventeen, eighteen. Is that something we wanna consider? Is that on, is that something we could do today? I mean, if, if by some miracle, the stars aligned, and the work got done, and it got inspected, and he could be open.
You said you're getting the floor in on the twentieth?
Twentieth, they're coming to put the rest of the floor in, yeah.
Yeah, what is this pub crawl?
The twentieth, yeah, Sunday, noon to six.
Maybe for the pub crawl, maybe they could help.
Well, you don't have a liquor license right now. Yeah. Would that matter on the, on the, if someone's a complaint, if we approved it subject to today? I guess, I don't know. I, I guess, I don't know, I, I'm not advocating for it. I'm just saying.
Mr. Chair?
Hold on.
I, I understand this puts you in a bind because you're, you know, wouldn't be able to participate in the pub crawl, but that's not on us. That's on you. So, so I, I. It's terrible you can't, but, uh, if this committee agrees, no, I don't, I don't think we should approve the license, I think we should go to have our hearing and take care of it then, and to be honest with you, if you're open in time, you probably won't make the pub crawl, but, you know, maybe we cancel the hearing if you're done and you have everything punched out. There's a very good chance we'll cancel the hearing.
But you still wouldn't be able to, uh, open until our next common council meeting?
Which is in September, because we don't have anymore this month.
Right.
And again, that's not on us, that's.
What, I agree.
It'll be football season.
Okay, so. Can't fit that in there. Okay, so that, so that's what we're gonna, someone's gonna play on the twenty second, open there. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
You'll, you'll get some, some sort of order. Uh, I believe that is all.
Move for adjournment, second.